Zoning Commission meeting for June 16, 2015 will now come to order. Our invocation will be conducted today by Commissioner Vincent.
Lord, we ask that you be with us today. We ask that you put our protection around those that are dealing with floods and the storms coming into Texas, Father. We ask that you give us wisdom, make the right decisions in your behalf. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business today is to approve the minutes from our last meeting. Are there any corrections to our last minutes? If there are no corrections, is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes from last meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, minute stands approved. We have no consent agenda for this meeting, so we will move on to the regular agenda. The purpose of this meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and in opposition to the applications before the board on tonight. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The board also considers plats. The procedure that we will use for public hearing items tonight will be, the public hearing will be open and testimony will be heard in the following order: the applicant, staff, the general public, those in support, and in opposition to the requests. If you are part of a large group with a common interest, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson rather than have each individual restate the same information. When addressing the board, please begin by stating your name and address. Try to limit your comments to five minutes. When all sides have spoken, the public hearing on the matter will be closed and no further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the board will then vote on the requests. Zoning requests and the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation will go forward to the second public hearing, which will be conducted by the City Council on July 9, 2015. The first application that we have, it's Application Z-1512. Public hearing will be held to consider Application Z-15-12 filed by J. Mark Page requesting a rezone from Office O to Single Family SF5 for lots 1 through 7, Block 9, North Cut Heights, located on the north side of Hudson Avenue, and the south side of Harlem Avenue. Who is representing this application? Please come forward.
Mark Page, 317 South Club Drive.
Want to tell us what you're doing with the application, please, sir?
We want to build three houses there in SLIP program. They're going to be gingerbread homes. If you've been in the area, there's a lot of them over there. They're going to be similar to that. There's one home on the property now. We're going to build three more.
Okay. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. The applicant is requesting to rezone from Office to Single Family 5. The applicant is in the process of replating this property to allow for single-family 5 lots, which have a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet and a minimum lot width of 50 feet and a minimum depth of 100 feet. The comprehensive plan states that the city should strive for a range of lot sizes to develop and should reinforce this, providing a choice of several single-family zoning districts within various lot sizes. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding uses. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Are these going to be rentals or owned?
Owned.
He is, excuse me, he is participating in the SLIP program, and so within the SLIP program, the houses are required to be single-family owner-occupied housing.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can you identify the three lots?
Right now, he's going through the plating process, so we're not real sure right now, but I think there's going to be one lot here, there may be a lot here, and then a lot here facing Harlem.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Hey, Mark.
Yeah?
Are you going to have sidewalks on these?
Hadn't thought about it.
Because it's just one of the things the city's trying to look at and...
The existing house has a sidewalk, and where the one to the west is, there's a sidewalk. So, I don't know. They, depending on how we do the driveways, I guess.
Okay, if there are no other questions from the Commission at this point, the public hearing will now be open. Anyone that would care to come and speak on behalf or against this application from the public, please come forward. No one coming forward on the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Do we have a motion?
I move we approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the application. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Application is approved. Our next application, Application Z-1513. Public hearing being held to consider Application Z-1513 filed by Hayes Real Estate Properties, LLC, requesting a rezone from light commercial C1 to heavy commercial C2 for Abstract 57, J.F. Dixon Survey Track 15, Section 1, located at the northeast corner of Judson Road and Don Cobal Lane. Who here represents this application? Please come forward, state your name and address.
I'm David Hayes. The address is 5009 Judson Road.
All right, Mr. Hayes, what are you, what, your application is being proposed, for what reason?
Well, it was actually on the city's request. We submitted for doing some improvements to our property, and that is the only portion of our property, is my understanding, that is, that is not zoned, that, and they requested that I have that rezoned, so it will all be the same. I wasn't aware that it was that way.
Okay, all right. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. The applicant is requesting a rezone from light commercial to heavy commercial in order to bring the property into compliance. RV sales or automotive sales is not allowed in light commercial, however, it is allowed by right in heavy commercial zoning district. The majority of the property owner's property is zoned heavy commercial, so this corner is the only piece that is zoned light commercial. The applicant is in the process of expanding his existing building, which requires compliance with zoning. Judson Road is a principal arterial, which is appropriate for this type of use. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding uses. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff or the applicant at this point? Okay, public hearing for this application now be open. Anyone who would like to speak in favor of or opposition to this application, please come forward right now. There being no one present for the public hearing to speak, public hearing is now closed. Do we have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Application Z-15-13. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Application is approved. Oh, this is a nice long one for me to read. We have PD-15-06. The public hearing is being held to consider Application PD-15-06 filed by Premier Management requesting to rezone lots 3-12, Block 1, lots 1 through 5, and 15 through 18, Block 2, Skyway Acres A, Lot 3, Block 1, Capital Plaza Center, and approximately 0.865 acres resident, residue of Abstract 258 PP, Range Survey Section 5, from Single Family SF2, Plan Development PD-88-4, and Plan Development PD-15-05 to Plan Development General Retail PD-GR to allow for four restaurants with private clubs and a medical office building located on the south side of East Loop 281 between Judson Road and Airline. Will the applicant please step forward, give us your name and address?
Good evening, everybody. Scott Zorn, 1798 Marquette Ranch Road and Staff. That was a mouthful again. You guys probably remember, well, it would have been two months ago, I was up here with the same drawing, however, it was kind of hopscotched, and we had missed a couple of properties. So during those 60 days, we've gone back, made some deals with the owners, and now, what you're seeing right here represents 20 different individual owners that I put together into this one development. That was a feat. So, we are now, and it was all, it was all approved last time we came, City Council then approved it. Now, we've added in these small pieces that Lonnie was reading, these little pieces have been added into the development, so now it's one grand development. It equates to about 10 acres. And now, we have the leisure to reconnect all the roads. We're going to tear out Clay Street completely. It's, I don't know if you guys have been down it, it's probably a 16-foot wide road with about a 3-foot bar ditch, very dangerous. We're going to go back and with a 30-foot, 6-inch concrete road. We're going to rebuild Cathy, the arterial, from the north to the south, and we're going to go back out to the loop with two text dot approaches, which will let our traffic go and circulate in a pattern. So, our architects are busily working on this XL ER clinic, which is at the northwest corner of Cathy. That's already under construction as far as demolishing homes to make way for the new development. And we have signed leases on the east side there, and we have Letter and Ten on the east again there. So, we're excited about not having to work around stopping roads and starting roads two years from now and all of the hell that comes with that. We can reconnect all the utilities at one time, bring all the fire suppression services in at one time, build the access roads, and make it just one nice development. Now, one thing I want to point out here is, and I said it last time, is that we're doing ground leases, so I'm going to be able to hopefully own these forever. So we're going through the whole development and putting uniform lighting, uniform walk paths, uniform roads, curbs, everything, drainage, it's going to be all done at one time in a real uniform pattern. It'll look really, really nice, look like kind of a Dallas-y look. Can't tell you who my restaurants are, sorry.
Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Zorn at this time?
Scott, you got sidewalks going over on the Clay Street side? Excuse me, on the loop side, sorry.
No, it's inside the Clay Street Road. See where the right-of-ways are, the green belts, right through there.
Yeah.
And then, were you planning on doing sidewalks? Is what he was asking?
Yeah, we're trying to do sidewalks. If the landscape ordinance will allow us to do it in the front, we want to do that. And I think we're, I think we've got adequate per-square-foot coverage on the landscape. And then this number five site down here, this cross-sectional piece here we've got drawn in, that's the, that's the Johnson Creek that carries all of the drainage. I believe that carries that all the way south to past Commander, somewhere in there. So we've got good, we've got a good place to drain all of the surface water, sheet flow, and we're going to underground flow everything on Clay Street, culvert and pipe.
On Cathy, what's your plans on that, just paving it?
Completely tear it up and repave it to a 30-foot width, right. And we're working on the, the abandonments to the alleys and the streets, back to me. And here again, it's going to take, you know, it'll be, it'll be all new, those streets are 40 years old, asphalt, and my street's going to be concrete. And then all of the onus of the maintenance forever will be on me, the developer, because it'll be a private street for all of my tenants. So we're taking some of the burden off the city there to maintain, and there is a lot of maintenance that goes on with the 3-foot ditch down through there. They're constantly having to clean that out, it's filling up with trash, and it, there's a lot of water that carries, so, you know, all that will be back on me as developer.
And you've increased your access egress-ingress to two from one previously.
Absolutely correct, right. We're complying with the, the text dot standard, 425 feet in a 55 zone, and we're able to fit two of those in there.
Do you still have entrance coming in off of the front of the canes?
Right, yes.
Raising canes doesn't have a loop access, they have airline access.
And when, when we did canes, that was all, it was before the master plan, but it was kind of thinking about a master plan coming, so there is a 30-foot, the driveway of canes is a 30-foot driveway that becomes a cross-access road. So we have, we have cross-access all the way through the development, per plat, filed per plat. So nobody can go out there and say, you know, I don't want you driving on my parking lot. It's all, it's all recorded.
So in theory, you can't come up airline, turn into the front of, the entrance to canes will be, or Clay Street continue on now.
Correct.
So your flow, you can pick whatever restaurant you want to, if you get sick enough, after eating, you can go to the emergency room. But I mean, that's all a consistent off airline also.
Right.
In theory, you've got full flow, which is a good idea for not just the loop traffic, but you can come off, if I don't want to fight the loop, I'll be able to entertain any of these people.
Right, absolutely, and, and you have the rear flow. So, now you see where we've gone to Golden Corral back here, which does not, by the way, have a rear exit at this point. We're creating one with our grading, and now, although, all that traffic can now go out the back or out the front. It's, it's just a real good circular pattern for the vehicular traffic, and the fire department loves it, loves, loves the flow that it creates for their engines.
So it's right turn in and right turn out on the loop?
That's it.
And the rest of the accessibility is along airline, and then this, what is this, side street airline, airline and skyline, is that right?
That, that's airline with a pointer, is Cathy's back between us here.
What is the city's future plan for that little airline street there?
I'm, I'm not sure. I don't think there are any plans to widen it at this time.
I'd like to widen it.
It's, it's narrow, it's...
I'd have to look at the comprehensive plan to see what the, the future is for that, for airline.
Where the right-of-way is there.
Can we go ahead and get the staff's report on this application?
Yes, sir. The applicant is requesting to rezone to PD General Retail to allow for four restaurants with a private club and medical office building. A restaurant with a private club designation is to allow for on-premise consumption of alcoholic beverages in addition to beer and wine at a restaurant. This area is a transitional area and is appropriate for this type of use or development as long as adjacent residential properties have proper protection. Due to the adjacency to residential, plan developments are a tool to utilize, a tool utilized to minimize the impact to nearby neighborhoods. As you can see on the site plan, the plan development shows four restaurants along Clay Street with one medical office building. Three of the restaurants, approximately, three of the restaurants will be approximately 6,000 square feet, with one being approximately 8,100 square feet. They will meet all development regulations on the time they submit site plan review. They will meet all the City of Long Views codes and regulations. The applicant also has submitted a sign package for the medical office. As you can see, they've proposed a pole sign along Loop 281 with two directional monument signs, one along Clay Street and one along Skyline Drive. The directional signs will be approximately five, five square feet in size, and it's just got a directional arrow that says emergency room, pointing towards the emergency room. Per the previous site plan and also on this site plan, there will be a, there will be a 10-foot buffer between adjacent residential along here with a 6-foot solid wood fence. Along Skyline Drive, there will be a 4-foot solid wood fence with landscaping, shrubbery along the Skyline Drive. No direct access from the restaurants or medical office will be allowed onto Skyline for these sites. No lighting shall impact any of the surrounding residential properties. Loop 281 is a principal arterial, which is appropriate for this type of development as long as access management is followed. The proposed development will have shared access onto Loop 281, as you can see with these two shared driveways. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding uses. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Going back on the staff comment, second paragraph, where he's saying this is a transitional area, where he's over there, says as long as the adjacent resident properties have proper protection. Could you kind of elaborate on that?
Property protections such as, you know, typically, we don't require fencing along a street, along Skyline Drive, but in this case, with the plan development and the residential to the south, staff asked through the plan development process that he, that they construct a 4-foot solid wood fencing with addition, with the landscaping along that fencing, and the landscaping's going to be on the outside of the fencing along Skyline. If you've ever driven down Skyline before and seen the Golden Corral, it's going to resemble that. So through that, you know, through the plan development process, staff can ask for additional protections for adjacent residential.
Yeah, and bear in mind, this is not, we're not asking for a general retail, which gives me a carte blanche in this area. Since we are backed up to residential area, the, the vehicle of choice that the city requires is plan development, which means you approve it tonight, the council will do it next month, I still have to take this plan to these guys, and they have to look at my screening, my, with the way my sign, my lights shine to the neighbors, they have to get all that tweaked out, so I'm not just running roughshod over the neighbors. It's all going back again for the stamp after I leave here. So there's plenty, there's a lot of controls.
Any other questions at this time? Okay, if not, thanks, Scott. The public hearing for Application PD-15-06 will now be opened. Anyone who wishes to speak on behalf of it in support, please come forward at this time. Anyone who would come to speak in opposition to it, please come forward at this time. No one coming forward at this time. The public hearing on Application PD-15-06 is now closed. Does the Commission have any other questions regarding it? It is a big project that we've looked at several times over the past couple of years, so if we have any questions, this will be the time. If not, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve as stated.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Application PD-15-06. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Application PD-15-06 is approved. Our next application, PD-15-07. Public hearing is being held to consider Application PD-15-07 filed by John Bowlen on the border requesting to amend PD-18 and PD-05-01 to allow for a restaurant with a private club located at 200 West Loop 281, approximately 0.75 acres of Lot 2, Block 1120, Longview Mall. Will the applicant come forward? Give us your name and address, please.
John Bainline, and the address is 2201 West Royal Lane, Irving, Texas.
Tell us about your project.
We plan on building an on-the-boarder restaurant at the corner of Loop 288 there in the Longview Mall, just in front of the J.C. Penney.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Bainline from the Commission at this time? If not, staff?
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. The applicant is requesting to rezone to allow for a restaurant with a private club. As you heard previously, the restaurant with a private club designation is to allow for on-premise consumption of alcoholic beverages in addition to beer and wine. Currently, the site is part of the J.C. Penney parking lot over in the southwest corner, that's where J.C. Penney's is. The plan development, site plan proposes a restaurant with a private club that will be approximately 6,000 square feet. The site will have a total of 61 parking spaces and will share 30 parking spaces with J.C. Penney. Based on the numbers provided by the applicant, the mall has more parking than what is required, and with the addition of two restaurants, the mall still has sufficient amount of parking. The applicant has submitted a sign package. As you can sort of see here, there's a few wall, there's a few wall signs located on this sign package with a roof sign and a few what we call...
Light signs.
Yeah, parapin-mounted signs. They will not have a freestanding sign at this location. Loop 281 is a principal arterial, which is appropriate for this type of development as long as access management is followed. The proposed development will have shared access onto Loop 81, Loop 281 with the mall. They will not have any additional driveways. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding uses. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Is this a purchase or a land lease?
Purchase.
Three-fourths of an acre.
Three-quarters with acre, yes, but...
And the ingress and egress from 281 does not change? Is that correct?
Yes, they'll just, they will have this existing driveway.
And who handles the maintenance on the parking lot and et cetera?
We will take care of our maintenance. I'm assuming J.C. Penney or the mall will take care of the rest of it.
So you're purchasing this from J.C. Penney?
Yes.
Okay. And is there a relationship between on-the-boarder and J.C. Penney?
There is not. They just happen to own the property on the corner.
Where are you in obtaining the agreement with all the parties? The operating agreement?
The operating agreement, right now, we have the agreement going circulating through all of the owners...
Property owners.
...of the mall. Don't anticipate any problems, haven't received any questions. Of course, that's all through our attorney. They let us know if someone comes up and has any questions, so we usually get information.
So that's, that's Dillard's and Sears and J.C. Penney and the mall.
Dillard's, Sears, J.C. Penney, and I think there's three entities that own the balance of the mall.
Yeah.
So there's like five or six entities that it's going through.
I have no more questions. I have no more questions.
So, we will have now opened the public hearing on Application PD-15-07. Anyone present wishing to speak in support of it, please come forward. Anyone present wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. There being none present, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and second to approve Application PD-15-07. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Application PD-15-07 is approved.
I will say, I hope they can save some of the trees, but I don't have a lot of hopes for that.
Yeah, those trees are really nice out there. Very, very nice.
I don't think they're impacting those.
I think they may lose one or two. I talked to the landscape architect today, but they're trying to preserve most of the trees that are out there.
Excellent, thank you for that.
And also, thank you for bringing another nice restaurant in Longview. Appreciate it. All right. What do we have next?
Staff up, yes, sir. Staff update.
Go ahead.
All items that went before City Council were approved.
Okay. We have any citizen comments at this time? There being no citizen comments at this time, then Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for June 16th, 2015 stands adjourned.